Thank you for the beautiful day you've given us. God, we thank you for the opportunity to represent our residents in this setting, in our council meeting. God, I thank you for the staff of this city, for the employees of this city. And God, keep them safe. And I thank you for their servants' hearts to return services to our residents. God, we just thank you for this council. Ask that you guide and direct them tonight and guide them to make good decisions for the people we represent. God, thank you again for this opportunity. And we ask now that you bless this time in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, I'd like to again welcome everyone here tonight for this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. I will start things off first calling the meeting to order and then asking our city clerk, Denise Pierce, to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams. Jeff Watson. Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey. Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Here.
Ernest Kate.
Here.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item four, comments from citizens. If we have citizens that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, I always say that because if something is on tonight's agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak then when the council considers that agenda item. So we ask that if you do have comments about something that's not already on tonight's agenda, we ask that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that the council won't take action on anything you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning something that's not on the agenda already? All right, thank you. We'll move on to item five, and I'm going to turn this, got a couple of public hearings, I'm going to turn those over to Ernest Kate, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 15 and 16 are ordinances requesting that portions of utilities meant to be vacated on two different properties, both located in Benton County. And the statute requires that a public hearing be held before we take action on the ordinances. The two addresses are 3632 Logan Heights Drive and 2342 Waverly Lane. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on those two petitions? If not, we'll take those up as items 15 and 16.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item seven, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look these minutes over. If there are no additions or changes, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item eight, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
A and B, second.
Okay, we've got a motion of second for A and B. Roll call, please.
How.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. We're at item nine, Upskill Northwest Arkansas. They've asked to come, and you've got an update in front of you, and it may be on the screens as well.
Sir.
Welcome, Carol.
Thank you.
And it's all yours, thank you.
Thank you so much. It's wonderful to be here in front of the council again. So appreciate the time to be able to walk you through the exciting things that have been going on at Upskill NWA, especially as it pertains to our Springdale residents. We've been able to support 54 Springdale residents. Thirty-nine are active students, 15 of them have already graduated and working right here at Mercy and Washington Regional and Northwest and Manah. Now, so pretty exciting that we're already seeing results. So let's talk about Upskill NWA. We'll go to the first slide, please. There we go. So just a reminder for those of you who may not have seen this, but we are a sectoral workforce development program. So we work with our local businesses, in this case, their hospital systems here in Northwest Arkansas, to identify the high-demand, high-wage jobs that are necessary to really kind of maintain the infrastructure of our hospital system. So the model is actually modeled after Project Quest, which has been in San Antonio, Texas for the last 30 years. And while we've been collecting data these past couple of years, they've got a very compelling case up in San Antonio, Texas. The model involves employer partners, which for us is Washington Regional, Arkansas Children's, Northwest, Manah, and, oh my goodness, Mercy.
Mercy.
Mercy, sorry, Eric, Mercy. It also involves education partners. So our participants go to school at NTI, or they're at Nwac, UAMS, or University of Arkansas's Eleanor Mann School of Nursing. It also involves a very important component, which is the Health and Human Services piece, which is what we use to help provide wraparound services to our non-traditional students. As we know, non-traditional students are an older population. They tend to have taken a very non-traditional track to go to school. In fact, they started, they graduated high school and then went directly into the workforce, or they got married right away and started their families right away. We're the ones that are bringing them back to school and upskilling them in one of six healthcare degree programs. So, and Upskill NWA sits right in the middle. We are, for each of the participants, we provide a career navigator that serves as a mentor and coach to them. As they, I mean, you can imagine going back to school and all the things that you have to hurdles you have to overcome. Our career navigators work their magic and make sure that our Upskill NWA folks graduate from college and then get placed in a really great job. So if we could go ahead and switch to the next one. Okay. Yes, improvised. So the model, just from a historical perspective, we were announced in July of 2021, and we kicked off our first cohort of 100 participants in January of 2022. And we've hit the ground running since then. Let's go ahead and skip to the next slide. The measures of success were jointly defined. So you should know that just to be able to get to January 2021, we had to convene 17 presidents and CEOs, if you consider that a mayor's a president, a county judge is a president, all the hospital system CEOs, all the educational institution CEOs, to say that they were all in on this workforce development model. So when we defined the measures of success, each person had to have a say in what success looked like for them. For our education partners, it was that at least 60% of the participants would have persisted in the program, meaning they would have stayed in school and graduated. Historically speaking, non-traditional students drop out at a disproportionately higher rate than traditional students. In fact, their retention numbers or the rate of persistence hovers around 35%. We set a goal of 60%, which is in alignment with Project Quest in San Antonio, Texas. We also said for our hospital partners that workforce expansion was an important part. Were we really serving the needs of those hospital systems by upskilling a workforce that could work and live here in Northwest Arkansas? So the goals for workforce are that at least 75% of the participants who graduated will have been placed with that employer partner within three months of that graduation. And then for those that were placed with a partner, at least 75% of them will have remained for two years. Upskill NWA requires every participant to sign a contract saying that they will go to school, that they will graduate, that they will interview with the hospital partners that are hiring for their job, but also that they will stay and live and work right here in Northwest Arkansas for two years, at which point their contract is done and they can move on and move up in their careers. We also had to look at income advancement. So from a municipality standpoint, there had to be an ROI, but there also had to be some benefits to the people, the participants in the program. And so we set a goal that said that for those participants that were placed with an employer partner, at least 75% of them would have either their annual household income increased to at least 80% AMI, or approximately $50,000 a year, or their annual individual income would increase by at least $15,000 a year. Again, we said these are high-demand, high-wage jobs. And in order to say those words, we actually had to define what a high-wage job was. So we worked with our hospital partners to set those numbers. And then the community return on investment, I mentioned, this is maybe more of a long-term indicator. We want to know that the dollars you've invested in Upskill are actually returning a benefit to the communities where these folks live and work. And you're going to see that we're outpacing even the things we thought we could do on that. And organizational sustainability is so that you know that I, as the president and CEO of the organization, am out there pounding the pavement, talking to people about supporting this program, which I have been at the state level, at the regional level, and even at the local level, and through national organizations that have given us grants in the past and will continue to do so in 2024. So if we go to the next slide, let me tell you how we're doing at Upskill. Our placement rates are exceeding our goals of 75%. In fact, they're 85%. So 47 of the 55 graduates, some graduated last year, another group graduated this year, and we'll stagger them out over the next few years because their programs are different lengths. So we've placed 85% of them so far. Pretty good. Let's go to the next one. Ah, okay, so we missed one slide. Let's back up to slide number five, retention. Remember how I talked about how community colleges and non-traditional students are dropping out at a concerning rate? Our retention rates are exceeding those goals of 60%, and they're actually 91%. Let's go ahead and skip forward, please. Okay, so income advancement. Our early results, and we've got a couple of years under our belt now, indicate that the household income advancement is exceeding our stated goals of greater than $50,000 a year. In fact, what we see from the 55 graduates so far is that their average pre-program income was a little over $29,000, almost $30,000. But their post-placement salary is almost $63,000. That has the ability to change a family's trajectory, and it has. I'll be able to tell you about Noelia as we move forward in this presentation or in this update. Let's go ahead and move to the next slide. So Springdale residents, you know, where's everybody at? We've got 39 that are active students right now, and they're spread across seven programs. Twenty-three of them are at Nwac in the Registered Nurse Program. Then we've got five at NTI in Practical Nurse. Then Radiological Imaging is our UAMS program. EMT is Nwac, Search Tech is NTI, Health Information Management is Nwac, and the LPN to RM Bridge is the University of Arkansas's Eleanor Mann School of Nursing. So we see 39 active students trying to change their lives for the better. Let's go to the next one. Okay, so what does it look like once they're employed? So we saw where the students are currently. What we're seeing now is that those employed students, well, they're no longer students, but they were, they're now employed, are outpacing our income advancement goals. In fact, I'm sorry for this eye chart. If I could, I'd make it like way, way bigger. Let me orient you with what we're seeing. So the total employed students, there's 15 that graduated and are working in our hospital systems. Five of them are search techs from left to right, four are LPNs, three of them are rad techs, that's our four-year degree program. Two of them are registered nurses and one is an EMT. When we look at the column on the right, we see that those folks that are employed now came in at an average wage of $27,500 and change. That's what they were earning before Upskill. When they were placed into their jobs across those five different roles, they were earning an average of $56,700 a year. So you see that their income grew $29,000 a year just because they got an education, they were upskilled, got an education, were placed into our hospital systems. So what that means in terms of ROI, and you'll see in the blue box on the left, when we first asked for this money, Mayor Sprouse, we said that we projected the ROI was going to be eight to one. In actuality, it is trending at a current pace of 10 to one. And we've got 39 more folks that will become graduates, 91% of whom will become graduates. So we will start to see these numbers trend up because we're seeing that the going rate in the marketplace for these high-demand roles is just growing year over year. So I think it's a very conservative expectation that we would start to see that grow. So next slide, please. If we look at the NWA region and the ROI there, we see consistently that it is outpacing what we thought it would do. Again, we said we thought it would do eight to one, consistent with what Project Quest was doing, but we see the current pace of the entire region at 11 to one for all the active students that we currently have in the program. And what you see in that eye chart in the bottom is the different roles and the starting wages, so you see how all the data is lining up on that slide. Next one, please. Okay, so let's also talk about something that we didn't put in there, but when we talk about educational institutions, if Dr. Rollins was here, you would know he's a raving fan of Upskill NWA. We help fill the capacity, and in fact, NTI has expanded their capacity because of how much we're increasing, or how many students we're able to bring to NTI. What we also see is some of the really great stuff that we didn't plan. So in this case, for the graduates that graduated in June of 2023, 51% of their class were Upskill NWA participants. 80% of our graduates received NTI's top honors. So four out of five of them were performing at exceptionally high levels. We've got spring orientation coming up on December 9th, and there's an open invitation to come and meet our new class for 2024. Here on this slide, real briefly, I'll tell you that that's Luciana Alva. And my picture on the left with her is the first time I met her. On the right is the day of her graduation, that's her father. When I met her the first night, she was part of the first 100 people that we committed to Upskill. And then she introduced me to her father, and her father said, "I had to come because I had to make sure you were telling the truth. Stuff like this doesn't happen to people like us." So when we got to June of 2023, I said, "You see, it does happen. It does happen for people like us." So it was a very, very proud moment. If we skip, we're going to see in the class of 2023, in the next slide, Noelia. So a Springdale resident who was part of our program and is thriving. Noelia was a class of 2023 and the recipient of the distinguished Nightingale Award out of NTI. She said Upskill is a life changer to many of us. It isn't only going to make a difference for me, it's going to make a difference for my daughter and my older children. Noelia is a single mom, a licensed practical nurse, and is working at Northwest Health. So these are real people whose lives you're changing through your support of this program. If we go to the next slide, one of the other things that happened was that Upskill became a nationally recognized program. In June of 2023, we received the HUD Secretaries Award for Public Philanthropic Partnerships from the Council of Federation. We don't set up this organization to win awards. We set it up to change people's lives. But credibility is part of what it takes to get the support you need to change people's lives. And so I added that so that you would know that this isn't a drop-in-the-bucket organization. We're passionate about what we do. We know who we're doing it for, and we really need the support of cities like Springdale to be able to help us continue to do this good work.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's, this was a little out of the box for the city to participate in a program like this.
Yes, sir.
But we had an opportunity, and y'all brought us a great opportunity. We had funding that was available for that. And it's really, I thank you for the report. It's great to see that it's working even better than was really expected. So makes a huge difference for so many of our residents and their families. So continued success, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions, council? For Carol?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yes, my honor. Thank you.
All right. We're at item 10, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is a replacement ordinance for a acceptance of a replat we did a couple of months ago. Once it had gone to council, we were getting ready to get signatures, Springdale Water determined that there was a sewer line, a sewer easement on there that was missing, so we have to go back through the process and replace the current ones, and neither one of these properties have any clouds on their title. So the title of the ordinance, recent ordinance to replace ordinance number 5876, accepting the replat of Harker Addition Lots 18 to 19 and part of Lot 17 to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
Say that one more time, Patsy.
Once it went through you guys, we sent the plats to have signatures put on them, and Springdale Water figured out, came to the recognition that there was a sewer easement missing on the plat. And so in order for it to be a correct plat, it needs to come back to you guys, and we replaced the previous ordinance, so we have a corrected plat that's been filed. And we do that so we don't have a cloud on a title when they try to sell it because the easement wasn't there when it was supposed to be. Now, we try really hard not to miss those, but occasionally, things happen.
Move ordinance pass. Got a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments, council? Anyone in the audience need to address anything here? Okay. Roll call, please, Denise.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Move emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman. Fugierus.
Yes, ma'am.
How.
Yes.
Watson.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 7-0.
And as the usual case, the emergency clauses are added because they're pending actions on this property. The next item is the final plat for Phase 2 of Deer Creek Subdivision. The planning commission reviewed this preliminary plat, determined that it meets all of the city's requirements for a final plat. The bonds and stuff will be put in place before we actually sign it, and I'm the last one to sign it before it gets filed. The title of the ordinance, recent ordinance, accepting the final plat of Phase 2 of Deer Creek Subdivision in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments, council? Okay, go ahead.
So, Patsy, I have some questions. As you know, you and I have talked about it without a lot of explanation, but about a year ago, I was called out to look at this piece of property after apparently construction began before it was allowed to even begin, dirt work began before it was allowed to begin. But in any event, I was called in, if you'll look at the plat, that's the picture that's on our screen, to look at the piece of property that lies immediately east, in kind of in the southeast corner of that plat picture, the basically outside of the plat to the southeast, where the, on ours.
Does this property bump up, the property you're talking about, Jeff? Does it bump up against it to the north and then to the west? So it shares both those properties?
It's on 48th Street, and it's in the very southeast corner.
Okay.
Yep, bumps up to the north and to the west. So when I was called out there, the problem was that there was a new construction home on this property that's in the southeast corner, and it sets up much higher than, apparently on elevation than they planned for this plat to be, and they began cutting out the hillside, basically, along the west side of this new home construction, and be along the east side of this plat. And they cut down that hillside, I'm guessing 15 feet at a slope, but a pretty substantial cut, downward cut. When I was out there, you could see that because of that cut, which began right along this boundary line, you could see in that, along that boundary line, and the downward slope of the cut, that because of the steep slope, there was some drainage problems, not drainage, but what am I looking for?
Erosion.
Erosion.
Erosion, yes, thank you. A lot of erosion problems that were going on because of that steep slope. Additionally, along this boundary line, there was a barbed wire fence that had been there for years, and because of the cutting of the slope, there was damage to that barbed wire fence, and then because of the erosion, there was further damage, which basically took a barbed wire fence and caused it to start falling over. So I was called out there to look at that by Mr. and Mrs. Brown, who are here tonight, and I directed them to get in touch with your office. I directed them to also get in touch with the engineering. So it's my understanding, and Ernest has asked around about this as well, but it's my understanding, and I actually met with Ben out there on one occasion to look at that, but before I met with Ben, engineering did send somebody out there, I'm not sure if your office did, but engineering did, and there was some, they tried to make some corrections on the erosion by putting down some sort of something to keep it from...
Erosion control method?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I guess probably threw some grass in there, grass seed or something, which helped, but it had already began eroding and causing problems with that fence at that point in time. So at one of the meetings, I believe it was in December of 2022, Ben, who, whose office had been there, I think Katie, she worked for Ben? Had been on that property and looked at it, solved the problem. And Ben asked whoever the presenter was on this project, "What are we going to do about the fencing?" And they were told that the fencing would be corrected or placed along that boundary line. And so that's good, you know, that's good. I mean, that barbed wire fence that was, they caused to fall over, we caused by allowing this project to be built like it was being built at a, again, 15 feet, 15 feet below the property level is my guess, but we allowed that to happen, and engineering looked into it. And that was, their question was, "What are we going to do about that fence?" And they were told at that meeting, "There will be fencing." So it rocks along, rocks along, nothing's happening, which, you know, you can understand, you wouldn't put a fence up until the project's over. But at least on one other meeting, Katie again brought up the fence and again told the presenters that that fence is going to have to be in place prior to final approval. So it was again brought up, I think, and a third time in October of this year, where basically it was just said, "Yeah, fences would be done." It was very, it's kind of vague in October, what was said, but again, the notion was, yes, the fences would be in place as required. I think basically is what it was said in October of this year. So then it comes to planning commission, and the question again is, "What about the fences?" And it's my understanding that you told them, "We don't get into that, that's not our, that's not in our ordinance. We, there's nothing we can do about it." However, we were told there was something we could do about it. We were told it was going to happen, and you may disagree with my interpretation of all this, and that's okay, but... all this, and that's okay, but, and now it's my understanding that they are not going to build the fence like they said they were going to. And I know, like I said, Ernest has spoken to several people that I believe would confirm that that was their understanding as well. What say to you to that, Ernest?
I did. I talked to two or three people that were at the, I guess when the preliminary plat was heard at the planning commission meeting, and the engineer was asked if a fence would go up, I think that's along adjacent to lots 148 to lots 158, if I'm looking at this correctly.
The civil engineer?
Yes, not the city's engineer, the engineer for the developer. Thank you. There is a difference, yes. And they did, they did represent to the planning commission, it was remembered by two or three different folks at the meeting, that the planning commission was advised that they would put a fence up. What the specifics of that fence were and when, I don't know, but it was represented that that meant that they would put that up. So I think where we're at with this, with the final plat at the planning commission was, the ordinance, the landscape buffer ordinance does not require screening between the subdivision and the property adjacent to it they were talking about, because it is owned, single family, part of it is owned A1, part of it is owned single family. So there's no requirement, and when we look at subdivision plats, we do look at what are the minimum standards for plating. And my point to you was that if someone represents to the planning commission that they're going to do something, even if it's not a required minimum standard, I do think it's appropriate to ask them why it's not on there, although I don't think that we can necessarily require them because it's not a minimum standard. So I do think it's a legitimate question to raise. So, and I wasn't at the planning commission, so I don't know what the discussion was, but...
We talked about the minimum requirements that had to be met, and again, it's not a minimum requirement, and I, Jason, you want to address the other?
Patsy, was anybody said what kind of fence are, I mean, do you remember?
I assume we were talking about the barbed wire fence that was there, that it needed to be put back. We weren't talking about any other kind. There are no minimum standards for screening fences, as Ernest just said, and a lot of times you get fences put in when houses are built, not when the subdivision is being developed, so.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. I was at every planning commission meeting, I believe it was the first one.
I'll just tell you, I went back to look at some of the videos, I think it was, is there someone that works with you named Ben?
Brandon.
Brandon, I'm sorry, Brandon, yeah.
Brandon.
I think he was at most of the meetings where this project was...
And so we, we've talked about this a lot, about, you know, what we thought was promised or not, or, you know, I don't believe that there was a discussion about a new fence. I mean, if there's a, I mean, the fence is still standing, yes, it's leaning in a couple of locations. You know, I don't know, it's an old fence. I don't know if it happened with construction or if it was like that before. I don't know, I wasn't out there before construction started. You know, if it's a, you know, do we need to stand the fence up, you know? If that's the question? I mean, I remember a remark that I made, maybe to the property owner, it may not have been in the meeting, but it was typically, privacy fences are built when the home construction is built. I mean, every new subdivision you see typically has a privacy fence put up around their yard, right? And so maybe that was misinterpreted, I don't know, but to my knowledge, me or ESI have not promised an fence.
So I'm a little disappointed, because I'm pretty sure, and Katie's not here tonight, right? Or Ben?
No, but Ryan, do you have any firsthand knowledge of any of this? Okay.
I'm pretty sure that Katie had mentioned, at least on one occasion, to Brandon, that the fence was going to have to be addressed before final approval, and so that's why I'm kind of disappointed that it wasn't, and maybe Katie doesn't have the authority to say that, but I think there was at least some understanding with our engineering department that there was going to be some fencing, and I think that was suggested by your office, not necessarily you. And it's my understanding now from Ernest that it's not a requirement that we can require, but when someone's told that, they kind of expect, you know, expect to rely on that.
Sure.
So...
I mean, if we said that, and that's what, and that's what it is, then, you know, we should, you know... Yes. Correct. And I talked to Katie as well before the planning commission meeting, and she told me that she reviewed all the footage of the previous planning commissions, and there was never a fence promised. So, you know, I'm here to say, if we promised the fence, well, you know, I don't know what fence we did promise, but is it a new barbed wire fence? Is it a privacy fence? You know, I don't know the terms, you know?
This is my microphone. I'm disappointed that no one spoke up at the planning commission. It seems to me like the engineering, I know the engineering office had a belief that there was going to be some sort of fencing, and they didn't even question it at the planning commission meeting.
Who was that, Jeff? Was that, who was the engineer?
I believe that Ben and Katie both were under the belief that there was going to be fencing.
The, your understanding, Jeff, was it about the barbed wire fence, or do we know? And would it have been in the location of the, I'm thinking about the bank that you talked about, would it be at the top where the barbed wire fence is now? Okay.
Jason, on the lots that will be there, will the back of the lot be at the top of that bank? You would expect privacy fencing to be placed?
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going, because I...
I mean, obviously, the houses, the reason we made the cut was so that the lot was buildable from the street side, because there was a significant slope there, so we made the cut so that we have a buildable space for the house at the bottom of that hill. These pictures are fairly current pictures of what the fence looks like today or within a month ago.
Do we even know is, we really don't know whether it's bent before, right? I mean...
I can't tell you. I didn't see it before construction started. It's an old, it's an old fence.
Well, there's a pink flagging on there. Was that something the property owner put on, or was that something that y'all put on?
I believe that's something that we did, you know...
And if y'all did it, what would be the reason?
We were doing lots taking, and so, I mean, some of those pictures show where we believe the lot lines are, and, you know, I'm not here to argue whose fences is, but, you know, in some locations, that fence is on our property, in some locations, it may not be.
Jason, I may have missed it, I'm not sure I heard an answer to Jeff's question. Would the, would the, if, as you say, and then sometimes it happens, but not always, if it's not part of the development, if an individual property owner put up a privacy fence, would it be basically where that is now?
Typically, it's along the property lines, yes. There could be utilities back there. Yeah. Back of the property line. I mean, you put the fence on the property line typically is where the, where it goes. You wouldn't, you know, I guess somebody could put their fence down there at the bottom of the cut, but then you're going to limit, you know, if you can use it or not, I mean...
Just, just from these pictures, this looks like a lot of, you know, whether, you know, you're required or what, this looks like a lot, this, this sounds like a lot of bad will that could be fixed pretty easily. I mean, you got metal posts that need to be reset, and I don't know, I mean, that's your business, and I just, I don't know. It sounds like a lot of, a lot of issue for not a whole lot of expense or work, but I may be wrong, I don't do fences for a living, so...
So let me just ask one other question, Jason. Is there any fencing around any portion of this phase of Deer Creek?
There's, there's, there was old barbed wire fence. There's old barbed wire fence that was...
That your construction or the plat approval is requiring any fencing, because...
No.
You're saying no. Well, on December the 22nd, Ben clearly got up and asked about fencing, and Brandon said, yes, there will be fencing. What do you think he meant on that, by that?
There's a couple locations at the end of two hammerheads that, there's like, I don't know, 200 foot of fence total on the interior cul-de-sacs that have fencing shown for safety. That, that's all that I know, there's no...
And that's, that's not any screening?
There's no exterior fencing shown.
That's just a, it's a, basically a barbed wire fence. Is that right? The fencing you're talking about?
No. There was a privacy fence shown on the plan...
Okay, thank you.
At the end of two hammerheads, along the new streets that were built.
As bad as this project needs to get done, it sounds like to me, is it crazy to table this? We don't have people in the room that have direct knowledge. Jeff talked about Katie and Ben and Brandon, and, I mean, is that a option?
We've got a motion, a second.
The motion to table this, Trump...
Yeah. I don't know that we'll...
I apologize for not using my microphone again.
I mean, I don't want to negotiate a fence, but what kind of fence are we talking about?
That's my point.
That was what was never clear, I think, that, I think that's part of the problem. Maybe there was an understanding that was going to be a privacy and... I honestly, Jason, just, I honestly don't think Brandon only meant the fence at the hammerheads. I could be wrong, I can't speak for him, he's not here.
Jason, you've been at it a long time, have you come up something like this before? Been at it a while.
Yeah, I mean, no.
My problem is with a vote here, if we vote yes, I mean, the city doesn't have any recourse. I mean, we don't have any recourse at the end of the day, but also hate to vote yes if something was promised to a resident and we're not following through, and we don't have a clear answer to anything, in my opinion.
And I, yeah, that's what bothers me, but we may not have a clear answer in two weeks either. We, if, if, if the motion, if a motion to table was to allow time for the parties, I don't know why, this hadn't already happened, but, but to try and work something out where we could feel a little better about it, but we, if we can't require a fence, then I don't know, I don't know what our options are, but I don't like it either, if, if something was promised that's not getting, getting done.
I guess, what was, if there was a promise, what, what was it, to fix the leaning fence, to put up a privacy fence? I mean, is that what we're trying to see what the agreement was between?
I don't think we could, I honestly don't think we would require the development to put up a privacy fence, but they ought to leave the, when they're done, that barbed wire fence ought to look like it did when it was, before they got there.
And that's true, but do we know what it looked like before they got there?
I don't.
That's the problem, so...
Come, come on up to the microphone so everybody can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea, and this is my husband Randy, and I actually have pictures of my son feeding the cows that used to live back there, so I have plenty of pictures of the fence that stood straight.
Do you have those tonight, or...
Not with me now, but I do have them.
And then my thing is, on the October meeting, I was told by Katie sitting right over there, and it's recorded, she said there will be a fence put up before they get their file.
That's how we know the date is.
Is your, is your understanding, what you want is just, you're fine with the barbed wire fence as long as it's right?
They've come through and ripped parts of our fence, and then it's just okay, it's not okay.
And we can't put our cows back there because the fence is all busted up.
Gotcha.
And we've been to every single meeting.
And I talked to Brandon after, after he was told to get ahold of me, or whatever, I was going to get ahold of him, however it were. So I reached out to him, he said, yep, he goes, I'm going to get you a privacy fence, I've got to get with the crew and find out when they're going to start doing it. I called and asked him myself. So I waited a week, never heard nothing from him, and then he said, oh, that's going to be on the homeowner, they're going to put the privacy fence around there, so right now, the privacy fence, your fence, is no concern of mine. And I said, so you tore my fence up, it's no concern, no concern, sir.
Well, I don't, I don't know that they would be required to put up a privacy fence, but they ought to make you whole, this is just, but I don't, but I don't know that we can require that. I, I want to, but I don't know...
The thing is, is we've gone to every planning meeting, and we've been on the lawn this whole time, and then this last time, nope, sorry, Patty.
Well, I know, I know that Ben came out to the house, and he said there wouldn't be a privacy fence put out there before they get their file. Ben told me that himself, standing on the property.
Just like also in the city meeting.
Katie's been out there and created some.
Our whole entire house was completely covered in dirt, ashes, and all of this soot. They said they were going to power wash our house, that was over a year ago.
It's never happened.
Never happened.
They come over to the house and said that.
So I don't really believe anything they say.
Well, I've got a motion, a second, that we're going to need to vote on if we don't have a, something else to consider.
I said that I was promising in the October meeting, it's not happening by the city.
And you know, we had all these cows, it was beautiful, now it looks like a, what are those, rock pits? A quarry. It's, I mean, it's just terrible.
And they started the project without knowing the files or anything, we got no weather, no nothing, had no idea what was going on.
And in the city planning meeting, they found out, they were doing all this work and they hadn't even been approved.
Now, you're, are you telling me that your steel poles are gone? Is your steel pole still there?
Oh, yeah, they're there, but they're like this.
From all the runoff, yeah, they come to the property line, cut it down 15 foot, straight down, and left it exposed for weeks, and then come up there and threw some dirt up there.
And...
You can't just cut it down and leave it standing like that.
They did put grass or whatever that is, but on the back, we have big ruts that just go through. Our property did not look like that. It's not fair that we just have to accept it, you know?
And that's what we feel like, we're having to accept all this mess.
So when, when we got this, we got this review in it, I had no idea this was an issue.
We're at every meeting.
You know, and I'm just saying, based off of just what we, what we received, and we're saying that we've got video recordings of what was talked about.
It said in the, in the planning meeting, that's correct.
Ernest, you say we got that?
There, there are people who remember, I haven't, I haven't watched the meeting videos myself, but I have talked to people who were at the meeting who say that a fence... myself, but, but I have talked to people who were at the meeting who say that a fence was promised. What kind of fence, we don't know, uh, but a fence was promised. But again, it's not one of the minimum standards, but I do, as I told Mr. Watson a couple of weeks ago, somebody tells you you're going to do something, it's appropriate to ask them why they're not going to do it, but it's not something the city can force.
So do y'all recall that your fence would be repaired at the meetings?
I'm sorry, what?
Did, did y'all ask for your fence just to be repaired at the meetings?
We've asked about the fence at several meetings.
We didn't really ask about it being repaired because he came out and said they were going to put one up. So we didn't ask for it to be repaired because he said he was going to put up a privacy fence.
Yeah, Ben said, Ben said we'd have, Ben said we'd have a privacy fence, so we just left it alone.
Ben?
Yeah, Ben.
Ben?
An engineer.
Engineering, Springdale Engineering.
Yeah. I've had Ben out there, I've had Chris out there, I've had Katie out there, I've had Ron out there, and everybody said you're going to get a fence. So just leave it alone. They have to have the fence before they'll get their final plat. And I've, I've called everybody in the whole town. I don't know who else to call.
That may not be right if we can't require it.
I guess my question is, if you can't require it, why are all the people in the city promising it, you know? That's what my question is.
I think we need to review the videos and see what was actually on the videos.
The, the only one that I saw is December of 2022, and it's a little vague, but Ben clearly asked about the fencing, and Br- Brandon was the one at that meeting, and he.
Said there would be fence around the subdivision, that's correct.
And then there was, what was the one in October?
And they asked what kind of fence, and he said, oh, you know, just.
But does a fence around the subdivision mean they're going to do it, or does it mean the property owners are going to do it when the, when the houses are built? I could argue that, too. I, I want to, I want to get your barbed wire fence fixed so you can have your, run your cattle and use your, use your property, but I, I don't know about a price.
We've had to wait all this time, you know, so. And that's what I told Ben, you know, months ago, we need to get this figured out.
Do you remember what was said in October? I do not remember.
Uh, I asked about the fence, and Katie sat over here and said that there would be a fence installed in that October meeting, and you go back and look at the footage, and uh, said that we'd have a fence before they get their final plat. Clearly said it, clearly said it.
I got a question for Jason. Do you, is there a requirement, is there going to be a requirement of the subdivision to have a fence? No? Yes, go, come ahead. Please give us your name and address.
Sure. My name is Tamara, and I work with the developer. I don't live in the city of Springdale. Um, but basically, this issue was just brought to my attention, um, maybe like a couple of weeks ago, um, and my understanding was that Patsy actually went, we had no recollection of promising a fence for anyone. Certainly, um, you know, if we had, we would think someone within our organization and within ESI would remember it, but we did, we did not, that any of us could recall. So there's no fencing drawn around the subdivision on the plat, nor has there been that I could find on any of the prior renditions of the plat. Um, I think for sure it is true, typically homeowners will put up a fence, but they don't have to do so. It's a large expense, um, you know, to undertake. So, um, anyway, we were concerned that we had heard word that they're, like, the fence is falling over, and so we actually sent someone out there about maybe 10 days, 10 days ago to take these pictures. Um, and we started looking at it and realized that, I mean, legitimately, the majority of the fence is on our side of the property line. So I don't, I'm sure the fence has been there for years and years. Um, so, but I for sure, like, if we have damaged it by, um, you know, during the development process, then we will absolutely go out there and, you know, make sure it's standing upright and whatever. But I would also say, like, from what I can tell, it's, the fence was there, we've owned the property before, I think they did, um, and, I mean, the fence is partly on the property line and partly on our property. Um, so I'm happy to have someone go back up there and put the, you know, make sure it's straight and standing up, um, but that, in my mind, that's, especially if it's our fence, like, that we're fixing our fence back, is, you know, kind of, that's great, we can do that. Also, I mean, I, I don't know if y'all have, if Patsy's able to speak again, but I think she and Katie both reviewed all the footage. I have not seen it myself, but I believe Patsy did, in preparation for the planning meeting last week. So I don't know if it would be helpful for her to speak to that.
She's on her way.
Okay.
I looked at several meetings trying to figure out what kind of fence we were talking about, and it's not very clear. You got to keep in mind, at planning commission meeting, we're working with what's required, discussions between the developer and the engineer that happens even at the podium, in the hallway, and all that is not something the planning commission gets in the middle of. And I, I can say we've learned a lesson, we're going to let that discussion go on anymore because it really muddied the waters in this case. And, but I could not find anything that there was any discussion, and I don't, or no one from my office goes and looks at that kind of stuff because stormwater issues, and those are handled by the engineering department. So I can't answer for what was said. Now, Katie did say whatever fences were required would be installed, but those fences aren't required. That's where we get into a real situation. If we want to do that in the future where those fences need to be required, then we need to amend the ordinance and get in there pretty quick so that we don't get into the same situation again.
Ernest, if that fence is on the other people's property, well, now that's going to be really convoluted, isn't it?
Well, that's going to be a.
That fence is not on their property. There is a clear pin. It is on our property. I care what you said. You can read, yeah, it's.
Okay, we don't get in the middle of property line discussions.
I think those are civil matters that are going to have to be.
We need to stay out of this, my point.
But it, it sounds like that the developer has just said that they'd be happy to go out there and straighten those fence posts up.
That's understood.
And if that, if that's would happen, then, uh.
But that's, yeah, Brian and I agree, but that's still going to ultimately be between, it's not a condition of whether this plat's approved, the way I see it. I hope, I hope everybody does what's right, but I, I don't know that we can.
Well, I think by this coming up, I think that, that it sound like it, it will be taken care of, from what I understand.
Please, I, I'm sorry. Can you come back on, back up here? Because we, just for the very reason that we're wondering what was said and what wasn't, we got to, we need to get it on recording.
I'm just saying, if they're going to do it, when will they do it? Because they said they're going to power wash our house, too, and that still hasn't been done. So I don't really believe them. I mean, I'm just, I just don't.
And I, and also had a question, you know, if I'm promised something from the city, why are they not sticking to it when, you know, it's recorded?
I'm not sure the city can, what, what were you promised by the city? Katie, Katie told you they were going to put a fence up?
Yeah, and they come to my house and everything, so I just, you know, kind of wanted to hold them to what they said, you know, make it right, you know, so.
But we don't, we don't, the, the problem I'm seeing is we don't have the, we don't have the ability to make them put up something that's not required. I think they ought to fix the fence.
Yeah.
And hopefully they will, and they've said they would.
The fence will be straightened by the end of the, end of day Friday. I mean, it's.
All right.
And we can provide pictures to the planning.
Okay, we've got a, thank you, Jason. We've got a motion and a second. Y'all need to vote for it or against it, just like any other motion and a second.
Oh, let's listen to Mr. Watson.
Then we'll decide where to go, unless there's a, unless there's a, there, I haven't heard a motion to table, and I don't know what we'd accomplish with one. So, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, any other comments from the audience, then I'm going to ask for the vote.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harryman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
How?
With the promise that that's going to be fixed, and we've all heard it, uh, has nothing to do about washing the house, but it's with the fence, I'm going to vote yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes, with no caveat.
Oh, carry six one, there is an emergency clause.
Move emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Bailey? Harryman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Emergency clause, carry six one.
All right. Thank you all, and I hope everybody gets what they need out of this. Item 11, uh, our finance committee chair is not here tonight. Would somebody like to take that? Thanks, Jeff.
So the finance committee met and, uh, resolution 11A has to do with, uh, funding for upscale. I'll read the title to this resolution. A resolution to authorize a subaward to upscale, I don't even, is that a real word, subaward?
Yes.
To authorize a subaward to upscale NWA from the city of Springdale's American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to help fund costs associated with increasing city of Springdale, Arkansas participation in their workforce development and job training program. That resolution was, um, forwarded from the finance committee with recommendation for approval.
Okay. Move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, I wasn't there, but where's this, uh, uh, $884,779 coming from?
It's already, this is a re, this replaces a resolution that was passed, correct, Cody? This replaces the, the resolution you passed months ago for upscale. So it's not, it's not new money, but it is coming from ARPA funds.
It's, it's strictly ARPA funds.
Yes. This is a.
That's the, that's.
Remind us, remind us again, Cody, why we had to redo this resolution?
It's just, it's, it's cleaning up. So originally, the original idea behind what we were doing, it was going to be an award to upscale, and then they were going to work with the schools, um, for the schools' capital, uh, projects they had to do to expand in order to house this programming that was going to be going on. Um, but it's just how things worked out with arrangements and things like that, we ended up going back and doing an award to the, each school individually.
Remember, we've already done NWTI and NWA.
Yes, NWTI, NWA, and now we've, we've gotten through all the, the fun legal stuff essentially on the award agreement for upscale, and we're just cleaning up their half of it so that we can, uh, pay them for the great work they're doing here in the city of Springdale.
Move resolution be adopted.
We already had one. Thanks, anyway, Rick. You have a second. Any other questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Harryman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
Thank you, Carol, for y'all's great work. Really appreciate it.
Great presentation tonight, too. That's very encouraging.
Item 11B has to do with the, um, construction contract for Kendrick Avenue. The title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract for Kendrick Avenue, project number 18BPS16. Uh, this funding resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
I'll ask a question, if it's okay, Mayor.
Ryan's here to answer.
It talks about, and probably Overton was going to ask, but it talks about the 4.861 million for this project from the 2018 street bond fund. Is that correct?
Right. This was, this was to be paid, this was a project from our last bond issue, the 2018. Does that answer your question?
They were dedicated out of that bond fund and not expended.
Right, we're just now get, we just now got the bids, yeah. Yes, we were holding back because we knew this project was coming. What, what, what held this project up so long was the EDA process. We got it, we received a, what was it, a one million?
1.5.
1.5 million EDA grant, but that slowed it down, too. So that's why we're just now getting this to go to bid. That's the main reason. And you were going to ask, is there something else? Or is Watkins still, is that still on the 2018 list?
Yes, that's still on 2018.
So that hasn't bid yet either, Jeff. The Watkins improvements overpass.
And that also has, uh, TAP grant money associated with it.
Right.
Thank you.
I do believe, this road gets fixed, we'll be very happy with the results out there.
Yeah, I think there's a groundbreaking Thursday, isn't there?
Does this have anything to do with that $2 million that Mr. Bailey's supposed to pass back?
That's, they reneged again.
All right. We have a motion, don't we have a, don't we have a motion and a second? Are there any other comments or questions about this, so we can get this project going finally? All right, go ahead, Denise.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harryman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
11C has to do with, uh, purchase of property for the senior center. Title, this resolution is a resolution authorizing expenditure funds to acquire land from Charles D. Redding, Jr. for the senior center project, project number 23BSC1. And I'll let, uh, this, this resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Ernest, do you want to refresh? I know Mike wasn't here.
Sure. Uh, the city, uh, at the committee's request, I added a map in the packet showing the location of this property. It's the, uh, red page 17 in the packet, although I don't know if that's.
It's the green portion that you're talking about.
Yes, it's the, it's the southern of the two parcels outlined in green where Meadow ends. It's parcel number 81528450. Uh, the appraisal was 230,000. Mr. Redding has agreed to accept 250, 2,000, or is it 253? Two, 253 for this property. We thought this was a reasonable counteroffer and brought it forward for consideration. And the, like I said, the committee requested that this map be added so it would show the location of the property.
I did not fully understand exactly what the layout of this until Ernest and I went down to planning and pulled up some of the maps or plats or whatever it was. Um, but just for everyone's information, and maybe everybody knew this, and I just didn't understand it, if you look at that picture, that photograph at page red 17, um, the yellow part, the yellow rectangle is where the senior center building would be constructed, and the little narrow yellow, uh, strip to the east is where a road is being constructed, which apparently was always on our master street plan, is the way I understand it. And, uh, I think it's, what was the, did it even have a name? I don't remember. But anyway, that road is actually under construction now, and so. To. And so the way I understand it, and again, everybody may have known this, and I didn't, the way I understand, that road is going to come off of Emma and head south, and then makes a westerly turn along the bottom of that yellow rectangle, and then would go over to the green rectangle for, um, our parking for the senior center. That's the way I understand.
Right. And it will, and it will also have access to Meadow and Baggett. The parking lot will.
That street, does the street match up to Meadow, or do you know?
I assume it does, yeah.
So basically, without.
Right, and we've got one more to acquire, that hopefully we'll be bringing to you soon. It'll be the one. It'll be the one to the north of that, in the green. You're just, you're just buying a little over half of that green, green rectangle tonight. Right, it's two separate owners.
Mayor, I just have one coming. That street's being built, part of the Market Center of the Ozarks project, to be dedicated to the city's public street. Because that's their access point, so that we don't have trucks coming further on into downtown, but they will access in and out that street, and that's why that street's being built with that project. It's actually outside on that street.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Entertain a motion.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second. Any other questions or comments? Anybody in the room? Okay, Denise?
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Mike, uh, I know you weren't here. You've got the one item. Do you wanna take that?
No, Mayor, the committee was out, without my enlightened leadership, so we'll, uh, let some lesser individual pick this up.
I'll do it.
I think I did.
All right, Randall stepped right in.
No, I'd rather you be Overton than me.
All right, we have item 12A is an ordinance establishing the Employee Health Insurance Restricted Fund and authorizing the transferring of funds from the unrestricted general fund to the Employee Health Insurance Restricted Fund, declaring an emergency, and presented by Colby Fulfer.
Yeah, as you'll remember in our discussion at the committee meeting, this is a restricted fund. We're asking the council to establish, it has to be done by ordinance, and we don't wanna commingle the employee health insurance funds, uh, with our general fund. And we're making the switch from fully funded, where we just simply write a check to an insurance company, to actually managing it, um, through our own funds. So we do not wanna commingle those. Uh, we want to cede that fund. We didn't wanna make a major proposal of, uh, premium increases to our employees, and so, uh, we're anticipating to collect four point eight million dollars, which is what we think we will spend, um, through being self-funded. However, there isn't a maximum attachment point, where worst-case scenario, something were to happen where everybody hits their, uh, stop loss, um, the maximum attachment point would be about six million dollars. So we just wanna do this to cover ourselves, um, and hopefully with the intention that we, as we continue to save money every year, that at some point in the future, we can just, uh, transfer that money back into our general fund.
Colby, where would the shortfall come from if, uh, if we, uh, if all of our funds are expended out of our, uh, self-insurance program?
Uh, it would come out of this employee insurance, health insurance fund.
I understand, but if this, but we're gonna be self-insuring. So if this self-insuring pro, fund is depleted, you're saying then we take it out of the other insurance fund?
Well, this will, all the money from the premiums will go into this account.
I understand, but also...
To make sure we don't hit our maximum, we're ceding it with one point two five million dollars. It's a worst-case scenario. We've never had that situation happen, but I think we have to count that as a liability. So we're just covering ourselves to make sure. But our hope is that as we continue to see the difference in what we would have seen in increase in premiums versus fully, uh, fully funded versus what we actually collect from our projected spend, uh, eventually we'll be saving a substantial amount of money, and we hope to be able to transfer that money back to the general fund. We just don't wanna commingle those two accounts.
Just starting out, we need to have that cushion, just in case you get hit with a bad year right off the bat.
And typically, you have one of those years every seven years. We just had it last year. And so if you're gonna start self-funded insurance, this would be the year to do it. But we have to make sure we, we're still covered, just in case.
At what point would you transfer that one point two back to the general fund?
That's up to the council, when they would do that. I'd suggest anytime you, you hit about four or five million dollars, move it on back over.
Four or five million reserve in this new account?
You'd be, you'd be safe in case you had two back-to-back years that were...
And then, and then, once, once you get that replenished, Mike, then the savings, they can go toward, the council may decide to pay a higher percentage of our employees' insur, insurance premiums. You may, you may cede to HSAs with more money as this account bills. We hope we can, we can do some more things like that to help our employees.
You, the, the further we go into this, the more savings you'll see. Because what a, a fully funded account, uh, insurance will do is they will estimate your spend, and then they'll bump that up, because they keep everything above what the actual spend is, and they do all the calculations on that. And since, uh, 2016, we've spent, uh, I believe it was three point three million dollars, uh, we've given to Blue Cross above our actual spend. So that could be money that starts piling up into this account, and that's not even including the, uh, RX rebates that we'll be getting, which could be four hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, somewhere in that ballpark range. So this will start building up, and eventually we'll pay, we could pay higher premiums for our employees or, uh, give them a premium holiday during the month of December, uh, increase HSA amounts. There's a variety of things that we can do to help the employees.
So this would be an update to the council yearly, or is it semi-annually?
You'll see it at budget time, probably, wouldn't you?
I, I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
The update to the council, how this, uh, uh, how this is being run?
Oh, yeah, we can update the council yearly on it and just, because we'll have, we have Brown and Brown as our insurance consultant, and they can, they, they're pretty good about projecting what our medical spend is, uh, or what it will be for the, uh, the next year. And so we can bring them in and have them do a presentation to the council, show how we did compared to our projections.
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Just to remind the council, we were, we were projected to get a twenty-two percent increase with Blue Cross this year.
Uh, twenty-two and a half percent from Blue Cross Blue Shield this year. With this, we're, we're only doing a five percent increase this year for our employees.
Right, okay. All right, Denise?
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson?
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item 13, Parks and Rec Committee Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We had two items when we met last week. Both were recommended for approval. They're basically one and the same, uh, part of the bond project to get them started, uh, for professional services. At two different parks, at Shaw and at Willie George. I will read the first resolution, a resolution, resolution authorizing execution of professional service agreement for engineering services for Shaw Park, 2023 Bond Project Number 23BPP3.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Second item is basically the same thing. At Willie George Park, it reads, "A resolution authorizing execution of professional service agreement for engineering services for CL and Willie George Park Improvements, 2023 Bond Project Number 23BPP4."
Specifically, this is dad parking.
Yes.
At CL and Willie George.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item 14, Police and Fire Committee Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We, uh, last committee meeting, we had four items come before, uh, the Fire and Police Committee, and, uh, they were all forwarded with recommendation for approval. I'll read the first one. It was a resolution accepting a grant from the Justice Assistance Grant JAG program, authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement and appropriating funds. And, uh, Chief is here if we have any questions.
Move a resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions for the chief? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
Second resolution is, I'll read the title of it, "A resolution accepting a law enforcement mental health grant from the officers of community-oriented policing services, or cops, for the Springdale Police Department."
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Questions for the chief? Okay.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
Our next resolution is for, uh, Fire Station Four, and I'll read the resolution. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for engineering services for Fire Station Number Four. And I believe this is coming out of our unrestricted fund. Is that right, Colby?
Yes, sir. This is coming out of the unrestricted fund. We had transferred, uh, approximately four million dollars over, uh, from lost revenue from ARPA funds into the general fund unrestricted, and that's what we had discussed, using, um, those funds to pay for this fire station.
Move a resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Let me get to it. Our last one will be for Fire Station Number Ten, and I'll read, uh, title of this resolution. Uh, "Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Professional Services Agreement for Engineering Services for Fire Station Number Ten, 2023 Bond Project Number 23BPF1."
Move the resolution be adopted.
Motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise, roll call.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, next four ordinances belong to our, our city attorney will present, so Ernest, it's all yours.
Thank you. First item is an ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of utilities located on property in Springdale Benton County, Arkansas, to declare an emergency for other purposes. This is at thirty-six thirty-two Logan Heights Drive. Happy to answer any questions.
Move the ordinance be passed and approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this one? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson?
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance and emergency clause carry seven zero. Next item is an ordinance releasing, vacating, abandoning a portion of utilities located on property in Springdale Benton County, Arkansas, declared emergency for other purposes. Property located at twenty-three forty-two Waverly Lane.
Move the ordinance be passed and approved.
We have a motion, a second to approve. Anyone else in the room need to speak to this before we vote? Okay, Denise?
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carry seven zero. The last two items are cleanup lien ordinances. The reason there are two is because one's in Washington County and one is in Benton County. The first one is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. It's a parcel in Cannonberry Place subdivision.
Move ordinance pass.
Motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Anyone in the room need to speak to this property? Okay, Denise?
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Howe?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause Kevin, carry seven zero. Last item is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris